Why you said six bucks, I guess. Call August leading Macon Board in case of order. This time I'd like everyone to stand and say please.
Please to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Main standing. This time I usually have a moment of silence. For one thing, I'd like to thank everybody for the prayers they sent toward me because I assume that's the only reason I'm here today because I had a major heart attack three weeks ago and still above ground kicking. So takes prayers to get me down, I'm sure of that. So this time for what we were hoping to accomplish here tonight and for veterans scattered around the world who've been killed every day. So we'll have them on the side. Thanks, everyone. You're welcome. First off, I guess we gotta approve the minutes from the last meeting, the July. We, I assume everyone had a chance to look over that. Have motion to accept.
Motion to accept, Mr. Chair.
Start. Have motion in a second. Any further discussion, all famous say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay. First spotlight on people of broken recognition.
Okay, okay, we have pre-recognition here tonight, so we'll just go out here and do this. Appreciate you being here tonight and some of you are here because of this activity and we thank you for coming. This is a time we'll be honoring the principal of the year, the teacher of the year, and support person of the year in Macon County Schools. And it's my pleasure at this time to ask Tolly Bowles to come up for the principal of the year. Tolly's been in our system since 1995. He served in Nantahala, he's served at Franklin High School, served in Union Academy, and he's currently the principal at South Macon. He's been out there since 2003. And, Mr. Shields, if we were doing agriculture banquet, he would be standing by the wise old owl, that's right. But we appreciate that, Tolly, and thank you for all you do for the young people in our county and this is your time to speak as long as it's not any more than probably a minute or less.
I probably shouldn't say anything. And I'm humbled by that, really I am, to have your peers recognize you and I thank them and it puts you at a point where you, hopefully you can uphold it, you know?
Right, you want to get?
I'll read this right here. 2012-2013 Principal of the Year Award presented to Tolly Bowles in recognition of your contribution to and support of the students, faculty, and staff of Macon County Schools dated August 27, 2012. Signed, Jim Dunn.
Next award is the Teacher of the Year. And this is Ms. Rita Easterwood.
Rita had sent me an email.
Okay.
She's got an issue that she had to take care of and told her that we would honor her at another date.
Another date. So she's been in the system, she came to us from the Health Department about 2008 and we'll honor her at another date. Okay. Support Person of the Year. And before I give this information to you, probably when you look back to see the people that had the most influence on the things that you probably did as administrator or teacher even in the classroom, that person that was supporting you, whether it was the school administrative assistant, the school finance officer, the teacher aide in the classroom, all of those people that support public education in Macon County are extremely important. And we don't want to forget them, their role is vitally important. Many, many times, too long work and too little pay, but they keep pressing on, so we are proud of them. And Carolyn Anderson is the recipient tonight of that and is Carolyn here tonight? She has been at East Franklin, I think that's correct, since 1994. Congratulations, that's a good long time. We appreciate your perseverance as much as anything else.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you have any speech you wanted to give? Did you need to get a picture of her with that?
Yes.
Alright.
She's trying to scoot out.
I didn't start her back.
That's right. Just turn right around here. Okay. Sue, I both, if anyone want a paper. Make them a paper, too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Stork highlights none, presentations. First is Officer Jolly. There he is. You're on, sir. Highland's Police Department, Rachel's Challenge.
Yes, sir. Showing up right at the time. Ladies and gentlemen, Chief Harold apologizes for not being able to be here in person. He ended up getting a chance to attend an FBI law enforcement leadership seminar, so he asked me to come up and speak to you all in reference to Rachel's Challenge. The Highland's Police Department is looking to partner with Highland School and Gillland Promise in presenting a presentation to the middle and high school students at Highland School. The program is called Rachel's Challenge. It's come to my understanding that the program was put on at Macon Middle School the last year, I believe. I'm not 100% sure.
And Franklin High School.
And Franklin High School. We'd also like to bring the program up to Highland School and present it to, Chief Harold and I discussed it, sixth, 12th grade, the middle school and the high school. The funding for the program is going to be brought in from an outside source. It is not something that we are going to ask from the school board or from the school. From what Chief Harold has explained to me, the funding has been funded to put the course on. What we're looking for is if we can get the clearance in order to have the presentation put on at Highland School for the middle school and the high school itself. I'm not sure if you all are familiar with Rachel's Challenge from what was done last year. From all appearances, it looks like a very good program. I'm not sure how well, did it go very well for the middle school and the high school last year? I apologize about, it's kind of a last minute thing for me to come in here, so I didn't have a whole lot of presentation time or prep time.
So you basically need our approval to, you all present this to the students to have?
That's what's been brought to my attention, is to get your approval.
Obviously, I mean, I have not seen the program, but read a lot about it and I think it's an excellent program. I know Mr. Jetter has been talking to Mr. Harold about that and see if they can work that out. Since the funding is not an issue for the board, it is, and it is expensive, I mean, there's no doubt about that because of the people involved in this time. But to let them work that situation out and they're, they have talked, and I know I've talked to Mr. Jetter about that and he's talked to Chief Harold about it some. And I'm not sure about the timeline, Ryan, I'm not sure exactly, exactly when that it might be done.
We haven't decided on exactly when or the scope of it yet. As I said, I've talked with Bill Harold this summer about it and we'll move forward with it probably over the next month or so in discussions and try to get a schedule. I don't know, I don't know what their limitations are with Rachel's Challenge people, I'm sure they have a schedule that you can fit into. Yeah, this is, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. As far as the pricing goes, they've got two different categories, they've got an on-tour pricing, they've got an off-tour pricing. If they've got a tour per se going on within the area of western North Carolina, then we do get a reduced rate for this month and September, they have nothing. They're looking at the possibility of October. An email I got today, possible in the end of October, early November. Dates are tentative, that's something we'd have to work out with Mr. Jetter, of course, and then bringing that in.
And we, we're very interested in coming back here if that, if that source of funding works out and then maybe if everybody could benefit from the price break that they give you when they're actually coming into the area. But as soon as they get that worked out at Highland School and Mr. Jetter, try to, at all possible, try to get to those grades that they have asked us to try to work with and see if we can do that. I certainly don't have any problem with it, I don't really, we need a vote, the consensus that we do that, if that's, if you feel like we need voters, King, that's your opinion.
Yeah, probably, in that way we're using good facilities.
I think it's a very good idea, I'd say.
Anybody got any prayers?
So and you will let the community know, I believe, on the way to the Highland, you know, you try to?
There is a community involvement, we not only do presentations to the children at the school, there is also a community involvement, bringing the entire community, the parents and the community unit itself, to put on a presentation to them.
Well.
Being correct.
So can you allow the Rachel's Challenge to be held at our designated time?
Say.
I'm not going to say. All ready to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. CTE internships. Ross.
We weren't quite sure what we're supposed to do, but I am Terry Staney and I am the career coordinator for the schools. And I am so excited to show you guys this because Sam is one of our students that took advantage of the internship program. And as a result of this, he has a job. And this came from last year, his senior year, he began working with the Performing Arts Center. And this masterpiece he created. And when he showed it to me, I was so excited. I just have shown it to everybody and so I'm glad that the community gets to see it tonight, too, you're gonna love it. He's awesome.
Kim, Sam, anything you need to say in the yard?
Um, just most, I know most, a lot of people in here, I want to thank everybody who has had an involvement, especially Ms. Staney, Mr. Baldwin, Mr. Shields have been a big part of my high school career. I'm now a freshman at Western Carolina University and I'm studying motion pictures and television. And I'm continuing my part job at Drake Software as an AV technician, which is also part of the Smoky Mountain Center for Performing Arts. So I hope you guys enjoy the video and thanks for having me.
Hi, my name's Samuel Wallace and I'm an FHS intern.
Protector.
Hi, my name's Samuel Wallace and I'm an FHS intern. When I was graduating from my classes before my senior year, I decided I was going to try and find an internship for one of my classes. I didn't really know much about it, but I knew that I needed to talk to Ms. Staney about what I needed to do.
Hello, my name is Terry Staney and I am the career development coordinator for Macon County Schools. One of my duties is to arrange internships for all in Macon County hospitals. An internship is an essential part of a student work-based learning experience and can be either paid or unpaid. A general internship allows students to observe and participate in the daily operations of the business. This hands on experience, helps students learn job skills and make better career decisions. My role as coordinator is overseeing the student application process, placement of the students in the internship, as well as recruiting community partners and teacher sponsors. After the student begins the internship, I serve as the liaison between the community sponsor and the school system to ensure both the student and the community sponsor have a successful learning experience.
After I talked to Ms. Staney about everything, I set out to try and find somewhere to intern. I knew what I wanted to do, I wanted to do something with video and audio, but I didn't really know where to start. I can't remember how it happened, but someone mentioned the Drake Enterprises, how they did all their commercials in-house. So I then went to emailing, tried to find out who I knew to talk to, and I finally got up with Josh Drake and he put me in contact with Ed Ledford, who's the head of Drake AV.
Hi, I'm Ed Ledford, Audio Visual Department Head for Drake Enterprises. We are responsible for not only video production for the Drake Enterprises businesses, but also live sound production, video broadcast, as well as audio/video installation and maintenance. During Samuel's internship, it has been important for me as the community sponsor to guide him through and expose him to real-world experiences that are but a scratch of the surface of the long and prosperous career ahead of him.
After all that, the only spot I left to fulfill was my teacher sponsor. While I was choosing my teacher sponsor, I knew I wanted to be someone that could relate to my area of work, as well as someone I would feel very comfortable talking to while I was doing my internship.
Hello, my name is Vicki Sutton and I'm an English teacher at Franklin High School, as well as a teacher sponsor for the FHS internship program. The teacher sponsor is the Franklin High School staff member whom the student has made arrangements with to evaluate his or her internship experience and to assign proper academic credit. Usually the teacher sponsor is chosen from the area most closely related to the internship experience. For example, a student working as an audiovisual technician, they choose an English or media teacher for his or her teacher sponsor. As a teacher sponsor, I meet with the student interns once a week and consult with them about their internship experiences. I assist with any problems that they may have and I listen as they share what they have learned over the course of the previous week. Typically, student interns are extremely excited about what they are learning on their job sites, so I thoroughly enjoy these weekly meetings. By the end of the internship experience, students are required to deliver presentations highlighting what they learned. As a teacher sponsor, I provide the audiences for these presentations. My final responsibility as a teacher sponsor is to assign academic credit with the help of the community sponsor.
After I finally got everything finished that I needed to, I waited. It would be a full year before I would even start the internship, but luckily I got to work with Ed during my senior project. It was a great experience to get to work with him before I started because it allowed me to get to know him and the AV department a little bit better before I started. When January rolled around, I was extremely excited to be starting at Drake's. I was also informed that not only were they willing to extend my hours to part-time, but that I was also going to be getting paid. So if just being there wasn't awesome enough, that made it even better. I met some really awesome people who I get to work with every day. Ed's wife Jessica and Adam Drake are just two of the people that I really got to know and work with. We had some great times and it really makes working a lot of fun. There are two major things that we do as the AV department at Drake Software. The first one is all the video and audio work for Drake Software, including maintenance on any video or audio related equipment. The other role we play is running audio and video at the Smoky Mountain Center for Performing Arts. When I first started, I was a little bit nervous because this was the first time I had done video work on this level. After just a few weeks of getting into everything, Ed had informed me that he wanted me to do my first commercial by myself. I needed to create a 30-second commercial for Drake's online tag service, 1040.com. I was really scared at first because I only had one way to do it and I had no clue where to start. After finally figuring out the concept that I wanted to use, I spent the next week designing, creating, and publishing my first commercial. There was a great sense of relief and satisfaction after I finished it and it was great to know that I could take on something like that in such a short amount of time.
Climbing Mount Everest, not so easy. Fishing, easy. Fishing on Niagara Falls, pretty dang hard. Paying taxes, now that's easy. Filling out tax returns, not so easy. Doing your taxes on 1040.com, that's stinking easy. Go online to 1040.com to get the easiest refund possible. 1040.com, taxes, one simple.
We decided as a team that we wanted to try and break new ground with the kinds of commercials we were doing. That being said, we decided to go with a movie trailer style commercial with pretty intense special effects. This was something I had never worked with before, but I was confident that with some help, we could make a commercial that we could be very proud of in the end. After about two weeks of nothing but working on a techless commercial, we published my favorite commercial that we had done and one I'm very proud of. The last thing I want to talk about is our time at the theater. When I first came on, I had no clue that would be helping in the theater. We work at the theater almost every weekend and even though it's very time-consuming, it's definitely rewarding. I've had the opportunity to work with some of the greatest people and artists in the world. It was pretty awesome to get to meet people like Jeff Foxworthy and working with the crews of some of the biggest groups in the country. I had no clue what the experience would be like, but now that I've spent several months working with them, I can tell you that it's been one of the greatest experiences in my life. I got to meet some awesome people and made some very close friends. Even though I was at work, we never failed to have fun doing it. In the end, I'm so happy that I chose to pursue this internship. A year ago, I would have never thought that I'd been able to experience so much and meet so many new people. About a month ago, I was also informed that Ed and Drake AV would like me to continue my part-time job after the internship was over. This internship has led to so many opportunities and it's not even ending. I encourage each and every person who is considering pursuing an internship to just do it. If you're just thinking about it, don't even hesitate to do it. It can lead to so many possibilities and it can reassure you about what you want to do for the rest of your life. I just want to thank all the people who made this possible. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the help and support of my teachers and sponsors who pushed me and helped me through so many things. I'm Samuel Wallace and I'm an FHS intern.
Let me say, Ms. Staney, thank you so much and all the people who are involved in the CTE programs in Samuel, that's fantastic. Anybody sees what's wrong out there with the world today, you see what's right with it too, from somebody from Macon County. High school is gonna make a name for himself and pretty soon, I guess, maybe we'll see him with film credits towards the end on a big production. I know that's his goal, but thank you again, you've done a very, very good job, we really appreciate that. And now I can put a name on the face when I see those ads.
Already on the big screen of the movie theaters.
Oh yeah, I know, that's true. Thank you again, Sam.
Thank you.
How's your brother Logan?
Uh, we weren't.
Did you blow him up?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you know why I love the internship program.
Next, the school leaders program Hall of Fame, Rhonda.
Rhonda. For you that don't know me, I'm Rhonda Blatton, I'm with the Franklin High School Athletic Boosters Club and of course I'm proud of the athletic program at Franklin High School, but I will say Nantahala asked me, the booster club, to come to the Andrews-Nantahala game and I have it for two years now. That's an experience if you've never been, that, that little gym with that much rivalry going on. And then I got in trouble with Coach Smart last year because I went to a soccer and volleyball game and ended up having to go to two basketball games to make up for it, so. But we have two special programs this year that will be held before home football games and the first one is our third annual Selective Veterans Event. If you've never went, it is a fabulous thing. Tommy's a veteran and I know Gary's a veteran and they've participated in both of the previous two. It will be September 14th in Cloper Bar. It will start at 6:45 and you'll need to be there by 6:30 if you participate and the veteran and the guest get in free. And we'll honor, or, we always honor World War II because there were so few of them left and we'll honor Korean War veterans this year as our special honorees. So if you get the chance to come, please come and I don't know, Tommy, did you get that in? The tickets?
I left them where you told me to.
Good job. And the second event is the first time we've ever had an athletic Hall of Fame and, and I really did push this, Tommy can tell you, it took me two years, but we're, we're there. The first, we put ballots out starting football season last year and took the first year by popular vote. From now on, it will be a committee vote decision, but the first year we went popular vote, we chose five candidates. Coach Tom Raby got the most votes, that was Sean Bryson, that was Paula Corbin, that was the '76 football team who were the state champion team and the '71 football team who were the first conference champs and the first state playoff team. And one of them sitting right here, he was on the '71 football team.
Was he great, Eddie?
I don't know, he's not quite as great, Eddie.
Now, he was a freshman on that team, so. We had brothers that were older than him.
Cousins.
Cousins, that's right. And so we're hoping that everybody will come and support that. It will be held before the homecoming game on October the 12th. It will also start at 6:45. Everybody needs to be there by 6:30 and the honoree and the guest will get in free, the same as before. And we always ask the school board to participate in both of these. We will announce you if you're there, so please come if you can, and that includes you, Dr. Duncanson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Yeah, she, she smiled at her wife, I reckon. She keeps me as busy as my wife does, so.
Try.
She try. Alright, superintendent search, review, superintendent survey results. Leanne Winter.
We have a few extra copies, I'm gonna try to make sure the media gets these, media, sorry.
I am Leanne Winter, I'm the Director of Governmental Relations with the North Carolina School Boards Association. We represent all 115 local boards in North Carolina. We're the organization that has been passed higher to help the board with their superintendent search. This is my third trip now up here. And the point where we are right now is the board asked us to do a community survey. It was done in two pieces. Half of it was the community as a whole, which could be both the parental community and anybody else in the greater Macon community that might want to fill that survey out. And then there was And then there was a second survey that was for staff members of, or employees of the Macon County Board of Education, all the way from non-certified all the way up through central office. So everybody had an opportunity to do that. Actually, move this just a little bit. What we do with the survey results is we compile them, and that's what this presentation, or the slides for the presentation consists of. So if you'll just go to the next. So at the top, you will see that there were eighty-eight people in the community that filled out the survey and two hundred and forty-three staffers that filled it out. We then rank these by the average on the scale and then rank ordered them. And what you will see here is that the top three for the community and the top three for the staff are the same. And actually, if you go all the way down through the top five, they're the same in a little bit different order. And that, that is what we see most places. If you don't see that with your top three to five, there's something typically going on in the community. So this is very typical when we do these with school districts to see the top five. And pretty much throughout, you will see them to be basically the same. The only one that was a little bit different was the one that was number eight for the community, has an idea and approaches to improve graduation rates and prevent dropouts, and that was number seventeen for the staff. I don't think there's that many students, per se. And it may just even be that you all, the staff, knew the rates had gone up in the community and had gotten that information.
Sure.
Yes. So if you'll continue to just scroll down through that, and it takes us through the twenty-four items that were on the survey. And you will see that the last couple, because I always think it's important to look and see which were the ones that seemed to be the least important as well. And so twenty through twenty-four, the last five were the same, but in a little bit different order as well. Has worked in North Carolina public education, should spend time in individual classrooms, has been a successful assistant or associate superintendent, has been a successful superintendent, and should continue the current direction of the school system. So that those were the ones at the end. It doesn't mean that they're not important, it was just that they were less important in the overall average to those who were filled this out. If you go to the next slide. I always find this to be a very interesting place to stop, especially when you look at the community. You almost have an equal division between those that have children in the Macon County schools and those that don't, that filled the survey out. Obviously, it's a little bit higher for those who did fill it out. This is a little bit unusual. It's a good thing. It means that you are getting some good input from people who have a vested interest in the school system but may not have a student right now in the school system. They may have at some point, they may be part of your business community, so you've really got some good outside input that we don't always see in these surveys. If you look over at the staff, there is a breakdown between administrator, teacher, and support staff. This is fairly typical. You would expect teachers to be the largest number because you employ more teachers than anybody else. So you, you would hope that they would be the largest number. And then if you go down and look at the grade levels, the one on the left is for those who are parents who have students in the schools. You have a larger number of elementary school students, which in some ways you would expect because you have six, seven grades if you include pre-K in your elementary school, and you have three grades in the middle school and four grades in the high school. So you have a larger parent community to actually fill those out. So these line up perfectly with the number of students in those various grade levels. And then if you look over on the right-hand side, this is the grade levels for the staff that filled out the survey. And again, the elementary school is your largest number. You have more employees at your elementary school just because of the grade span plus because of the class size requirements that are still in place for K-3. Scroll on down, that may be the end of, that's the end of that. Also, as part of the packet at the end of the survey, people were asked to provide any comments that they wanted to, an open-ended question. And what has been provided today is a redacted version of that. What was redacted out is any reference to a specific person, either someone employed in the school system or outside the school system, or a student, because all of that is protected by the personnel laws and the student confidentiality laws. And so that has been redacted. The board does, did get a version, an unredacted version, which they have a right to see the full thing. So, but today, we only provided the redacted version for that purpose. So the board has had these for a few days and hopefully had a time, some time to look over them and think about them. So what we typically do now is the board will give to me the qualities that, based upon this survey and your own personal thoughts, you would like to see in the candidate. And then we will take what I write today, and we will build it into an instrument that you can use when you look at the applications and evaluate them so that you can see how the application is matching up with the qualities that you have collectively set are important to you, if that makes sense. So it's really just me doing bullet points, and you throw stuff out, and I throw it up here, and everybody in the audience can see it.
Number sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. This would be the core.
And that would be from the, on the community side?
On the staff side.
Oh, on the staff side.
Questions are the same, but it's on the staff side.
Okay.
It's the has-been staple.
So... So number sixteen, just so the audience knows what you said. Number sixteen is willing to take new approaches in teaching and learning. Number seventeen has an idea and approaches to improve graduation rates and prevent dropouts. Eighteen, it should have high visibility in our schools. Nineteen is, has experience with building, maintaining, and managing schools. And number twenty is, has worked in North Carolina public education.
Let me ask another question that may be deviating from what you're saying. I see you're about a month behind on the timeline. What would have to occur? I think the group on this one time is that we took the applicants, we looked at them, and we weren't... We feel like we hadn't, we didn't want to know the applicants, that we could extend the dates. What, what would happen? I see this is December one for the person to be involved.
Well, what we had talked about was that, I mean, that, but that there's likely you would not want to employ them until January, I guess, second, whatever that is, Monday is. We kind of have that extra month in there because of the holiday season. Most boards who are doing it this time of year choose not to go ahead and employ the person at the beginning of December and make it a January start date. So you've got some extra time built in there.
I'm not sure you could answer this, but with your experience, are we handicapping ourselves by trying to fill this position, I want to say first semester, at the end of first semester? I believe I heard in the conversation that the best time to seek your superintendent is, to fill vacancies and seek superintendents in like January and February?
I would not say that that is the best time. That is a more, the spring is a more typical time because superintendents who are going to be retiring or their contract has been bought out, or not bought out, but their contract has been non-renewed, that is typically the timeframe where they are ending up doing their superintendent search. There are some downsides to that because there is a lot of competition. And so you are competing with other boards who the same person is applying to, and we have had experiences where one board, where two boards end up winning the same candidate. So right now is a time where there aren't a whole lot of superintendent searches going on, and so you've got a more open field to be able to, to find someone. We've never, so I would not say one is better or worse than the other. There are advantages to both.
Listen, my thought was going, I don't want to handicap ourselves and be in a rush, but everywhere we go into community, everywhere I go into community, people indicate this is the most important decision this board's going to make.
It is.
As superintendent.
It is.
And do not get in a hurry.
I don't, the timeline that we have given you is our typical timeline.
But we're already a month behind. It says here, July twenty-sixth.
And we would just bump everything a month because we've got that. Basically, it will bump everything. The timeline you have will basically bump out a month so that they would start at the beginning of January.
But there is an option if this board felt that we need to look at four candidates that we could ask for July one?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
If we ask for July one, what contractual thing with you all are we, are we still?
We have an agreement to do your superintendent search, and we will do it until it is.
Okay.
And we will do it as many times as you want until we get you the right superintendent for this board.
Then I guess we would be in conversation with our superintendent, Dr. Duncan, how we were trying to, we were going to extend that time to a general.
If we get to that point. So, and we, we have had boards who, in all honesty, went through that first batch, they did their interviews, and they said, you know, if the right person isn't here, we want to open it back up, and we've done that. And we will do that for you all if that's, we hope it doesn't happen. For both, for you primarily, because it's a lot of work on. We hope that this first batch will provide you the ideal candidate for the Macon County schools.
I just know, question sixteen through twenty captures a person that has been a lot of things. Has been a teacher, has been a principal, has been an assistant superintendent, has been a superintendent. All of those have to be successful, and sometimes that's...
And that when you interview them, you all click, which is important, that you have a good working relationship with the person and relationship to their potential.
But it wouldn't cost us anymore if we had to extend it to July one?
So I have these five qualities. Are there other things that are of interest to you in helping you go through these applications beyond those five?
I think like the first one, those guys, staff, students, parents, and community work together to help children learn. I think, of course, it's, that's got something to say that we need strong people skills because we have a lot of people to work with, and it's always better if we can get along with them, and doing the very best out of them. Leadership starts at the top.
I agree with her. If we look at sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, if you have again what she said, you will be, has been an effective classroom teacher, has been a successful principal, has been a successful assistant or associate superintendent, has been a successful superintendent, has worked in North Carolina public education. If they don't have that, as I was talking about, I would show up in those areas, right? They're not a good communicator.
Right. But this, when we build this, I mean, it's just something that you can specifically zero in on, and we don't want to limit you in, in your review process of these applications, if that makes sense.
I also can't work with community boards, it's important. Macon County has tremendous community support in our schools, so I'd see somebody that's willing to work, reach out to the community and realize that they're a partnership with Get My Kids.
Mr. Shields, when you said sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, you said staff answers. Did you actually mean the community?
Years on the staff. That's why I call it a hand-me-down question, sixteen to twenty.
The questions on here. Okay, now I got it. Okay. I was looking at here, the, okay. Okay. Questions on survey, so I know what to reference, have them referenced back. Okay. We're good, man.
And like Mr. Shields says, if they have those qualities, we're going to have this, but I'm still wanting to put this out there because it's so important to superintendents to understand school finance, budget, and department management. Wow. It's even more important than ever to understand the budget. I don't make a dollar, I don't make a ton of dollars. Something that my husband would say, I have those qualities.
I'm like fifteen, I mean, I go through the big one. They don't take superintendents, but it's like, we're years.
And you may have also gleaned some things from the comments as well that you want to add in or just think about as your review.
I think one thing that's kind of critical about, or speaking about in the comment section, was the political part. I think what we all have to understand, the superintendent understands is you, you will be involved in a political realm within the community. And I think some of the comments did not want that. You can't dodge that bullet. You will be involved in the political process within, you have to, in North Carolina, we have to depend upon our county commissioner. We have to depend upon our local candidates who work and involve in things like that. I don't think you can dodge that bullet. You have to stay involved with your local leaders and understand what they're saying.
And Leah, for me, another one that was really important, I don't know if she's actually worried about here, but the superintendent Ash Beck, how he looks at technology within the classroom, even at a younger age, I mean, just so important for those young children to be accustomed to this, whether it's iPads or the new. And even for me, it is the superintendent, how hands-on, I'd like for him to be very interested in what the teaching, the testing. I am opposed to overly testing our kids.
So philosophy on testing?
For me, that's important, just as a teacher. But I know we have to have accountability, but as a parent...
I say some of that is obviously accurate.
It's very state mandated, but there is also lots of stuff out there that's not state mandated, that, and I know there's reasons for it, but there's sometimes, it's just a parent's point of view. There's a lot of testing goes on that sometimes, I just like to see what his opinion is, whether you have it on, or him or her. Anything else? Another thing for me is I also think it's important that we be interested in extracurricular activities, whether it's basketball, football, band, because I do think that helps the graduation rate and keeping our kids engaged in school. So I think it's, I would like a superintendent that cares about that for the more. In a school, good one.
No, I'm like, very much.
Anything else?
No. Since they challenged me, I will say this. The comments is the most interesting thing to me. I think it spoke volumes about what I've already said, that that's very important, and I think this comment, excellent, we have to get someone that's married with our culture and understands the area we live in. whatever, to make sure they are on their toes as far as their job.
Going once?
Going twice?
So, what will happen from this point, and I need you all to make one other decision tonight, either tomorrow or Wednesday, you will be mailed a box. That box will come certified mail, and it will have all the applications in it, it will have, most likely, our generic version of this, and then we will email you one more specific based upon these comments. We have had school board members in the past who were not home when that delivery happened, and then did not go and pick up their box, because they weren't sure what it is, so, but that's what it is, if you get something in the next few days, it's not the IRS or something like that, so please go pick up your box from the post office if you weren't home when they got, when you get it home, please make sure you put it in a secure place. Again, this is confidential information, don't share it with anyone, don't share it with your wife, don't share it with your children, your next door neighbor, if you really just have to talk to somebody, what I always tell people to do is, go take, go get your dog, go sit by the fire, and have a little chat.
If it wasn't bad day, my dogs don't speak English, they don't understand me anyway.
Is, if the names also considered confidential?
The names are, I mean, the names are highly confidential.
Information, but the names themselves...
The names themselves are confidential, you cannot release the names, and I mean, that's a breach of state law, so.
Thank you.
You did receive eighteen applications, which is the same number that you, I believe, received the last time, that's a good, strong number, so you should have lots to review. Typically, you should get your box about Friday, and we usually like to give you at least two weekends to review it, so we need to set a meeting for sometime the week of September eleventh, or the week after that, to go through the process of who you would like to interview. That will be a closed session meeting, one to two hours, dependent upon how it goes. And, sorry, I just need you all, if you can tonight, to pick a date and time for that meeting, we can do it anytime of day, if you want to do it in the evening, we can do it in the evening, if you want to do it in the daytime, we can do it in the daytime, I don't know if anybody has work commitments that makes it so that they can't meet during the day.
Well, for me, it would be, it has to happen, like, four or five on, if they have to be down here, four days a week.
I agree, earlier, I can do it, but early in the day is difficult. My preference is later.
Right, we just wanted to offer to you, we can come anytime you want us to come, so.
May was looking at.
So, September tenth, I'm sorry, the week, that week or the next week?
Was it Thursday, was it down Thursday?
Or next week, the twenty? Is that within the timeframe, because our schedule...
The week of the tenth would be better, but, I mean, if it works better for your schedules, the next week.
Next week, so.
Thirteen to four, does that work for everybody?
It's a one to two hour meeting. And it will not be...
This is September nineteenth?
I don't know, and it won't be ours, and it'll be someone else, because we've got our district meetings, and so, it's, we've got lots of people who do this all the time, so I just didn't want you to say, well, where's Leigh, and she's come to all these meetings. No, it was Molly. And Molly lives in Denver, so. What is your recommendation for, you know, I know it's ultimately our decision, but
for how many would be a good five, six to interview, or do you have a recommendation, or a lot for us on that, on that class to think about?
We recommend, you know, less than five, some where typically seven to ten, no more than twelve. But kind of that seven to ten is your ballpark of where you're headed.
And if we have questions on our application, would it, you know, to follow you guys and ask?
You feel free to, there should, hopefully will be enough information, we do some, what we will give you is, we will give you the actual application, in front of all those applications, you will have a sheet, that we call it the experience sheet, and it will divide them up as, North Carolina was superintendent experience, out of state was superintendent experience, North Carolina central office experience, out of state central office experience, all the way down to principal, I don't, I'm not sure we've ever had a teacher apply correctly, of course. So, you will have that at the beginning, so that you can kind of see, okay, who were the ones of the eighteen who had superintendentism in North Carolina, and it will have a summary of all of their experience on that sheet, so it's kind of like a little cheat sheet.
You want to bring it starting?
Right, and then in addition to the application, we do do some internet, go ahead and do some internet searching for you, so you will see what the internet has picked up about. So, you should have a good amount of information about, about anybody, and then the packet will also include a list of potential questions to ask during the interviews, please make sure that you go through those, and identify the ones that you would like to ask, and any other questions that you may have, because we will compile all of those as well for you to conduct your interviews, and so if you've already gone through them, and identified the questions you want to ask, it makes the meeting go a lot faster.
It takes about two hours, so four to six, we just put that way up.
Yeah, just put four to six on your calendar, it shouldn't take more than two hours.
One final, one final dumb question, and you got some questions?
There are no, there are...
One of the things I've been kicking around was, almost another committee, from the community to possibly conduct instead of interviews, that would not be possible, I think, due to confidentiality, the names.
You would have to get a release from all the, from the candidates that they would interview, and I will tell you, you will have people drop out.
I've kicked that around as part of it, but you answered my question, but what you said, I thought that was...
We do not, we do not suggest that because of that very reason, that you've got people...
Spelling names, whatever.
Right, if their current employer finds out, it could cause them problems if they're not going to be your superintendent, so.
Like their job.
Right, they would like to stay. Some way, some way or another. So, we have Thursday the thirteenth, and four to six. Here. And we will make sure that you know who's going to go in and work. Right, and they'll need to be noticed and all of that, so, that is all I have, unless you won't have it.
You want questions?
Some more questions. Back to Ashlyn, spin the night. I dropped my daughter off.
We don't know where to find her, if you have any questions.
You know where to find me.
We appreciate me, yeah.
It's always a treat, it's a nice ride.
Be ready for whoever you send.
I actually drove through here on Sunday as well, we were driving back from Alabama, so I couldn't quite figure out why I had to drive all the way to Raleigh and then turn around and come right back, not be dropped off, but that's the way some things work out.
Comment back there. Comment. Send agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to take a motion, we move the superintendent into closed session, please.
Have a motion and a second. I'm prepared to say aye. All vote no.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Duncan mentioned something earlier about the closed session that I'd just like to throw out for the board's consideration, it's always, always been the practice of this board to save closed session for the very, the bitter end, you don't have to do that, everybody's, I think we've always, so ingrained, we think it's like the law, the closed session has to come at the end of the meeting. Anytime the board wants to go into closed session, as long as you've been properly called, you can do it, and it might help us not be here until, you know, all hours like we are sometimes, to know we've got this room full of people waiting for us, so, I just put that, I just put that out there for your, for consideration.
May not be the night to follow that at house.
Okay, nobody brought sleeping bags, so I go back.
Person now?
Mr. Chairman, we have a couple of vacancies, one of which will be filled with your approval. We also, I would bring to your attention to also take into closed session, a substitute teacher whose application was brought to me, and I misplaced their certificate of completion for the subcourt until after the agenda had been posted, so I would ask that that individual be included in closed session as well.
You don't need to do anything additional to discuss it in closed session, just, it will need to be, that name will need to be added to, to the motion.
Do we need it now?
Not now, no.
Anything else you would like?
No, sir.
Policy?
If I could, I have a question. One of the things I see, Ms. Moore, there are cost clerk transportation departments, is that, in your opinion, necessary, that, that, that cannot be assumed by, combined with other folks, that you can be assembled in position?
That would be something you'd have to ask our transportation director, Randy. I personally can't speak to that, I think it's a pretty important position, but everybody thinks what's close to them is an important position, so, I really can't speak to that, I apologize.
And our director is Mrs. Morton, or who is, who is that?
Well, I think you would ask Randy for sure.
Okay, so I didn't, I wouldn't come here with that, I was placing director, I don't know if that was, is that...
She's director of auxiliary services, Randy falls under her umbrella, but Randy is the individual that runs that job.
Okay. Have we started taking applications for that, Mr. Moore, where are we with in that process?
Well, what we have is a unique system of purchasing, it's a little bit different than any other department within the school system, and there is a level of training that has to be completed, in order to make sure that that purchasing format is followed, and so what we'd like to do is have Jerry, before he retires, train that individual. The training that encompasses that position is given one time a year in Raleigh. I think it's in October, unless I'm mistaken.
Around first of November.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, but I do know that there is specialized training, once a year, so...
That'd be in November, November, November.
It is what it is.
I discussed the position extensively with Randy, his work, for some degree, and we can certainly provide you the description of that job, it is primarily funded by the state, it is typically a position that is, that is used in most school systems, some have more than one, because of the highly specialized nature, transportation in North Carolina being pretty much a state function, and when you get into that, then you're getting someone that's paid at least eighty percent by the, by the state, so they feel like, from transportation standpoint, it is a more important position, and they do use that, and if we find someone who is, who is qualified for that, obviously, they would probably need to have, would be able to acquire a bus driver's license, I just feel like that people in that section down there need to be able to respond if we have to have some emergencies and this type thing, but it is very specialized in terms of computer services, with the state, repair parts, all of those kinds of things, but I'd be glad to send you a list of those specific things.
That'd be great.
Really state, state duties, I mean, local, but...
So, the, the, that does come from the state?
Eighty percent, yes, eighty percent.
Eighty percent. Also, the white buses, twenty percent has to come from...
A lot.
Strange.
If you will, I will.
When they get, eighty percent more, we have to jump.
I think, I think what you said there, when he says cost clerk, I'm assuming that's another.
Oh, yeah.
I'd hate to think a CDL license would hinder a qualified person from getting this job, you have, only credential you had to have really to be a CDL license, so, that would bother me, if a CDL license took a really highly quali, highly qualified accounting person.
Well, that's not hard to get a CDL, I mean, a lot of it's hard, but they can do it, right?
Yeah, but that's out of a choice, so, you know, when you, when you pick up CDL license, you're taking ownership of a bus, people riding the bus, those types of things, there's people out there that I think would apply for this job, but that would be a deterrent for them, and how many times will this cost clerk person be a CDL, I mean, be going out on the road somewhere, I'd say minimum, because of all the other people down there, I just hate to see a person of high quality denied this job because they didn't want a CDL license, didn't want to take that responsibility, and that's big responsibility, so, I'd like for us to leave that kind of optional, if, if, if it's, and not let it just be something that a person had to have, I know, I know people who would, who would turn the job down because of the CDL.
Is that currently part of the requirement, Mr. Moore, anything about the CDL being a job requirement, is that part of...
I don't think it's a part of the job requirement, but typically, we have people work at the bus garage, they have to get their CDL. You wouldn't have to, I presume, but I would think that Randy would want that person to have their CDL, much as we like for our principals to have their CDLs because of emergency situations that come up in the school, it's just an emergency, I'm not saying that, that's not the primary quality that we're looking for.
I'd hate to take, think we have somebody within the system who are like that, that's high quality, that they would take themselves out of this, because they prefer not to have the CDL license, because they didn't want to take all the responsibility, it would be nice if all our coaches had CDL licenses, but some of them, my wife went up, you don't want to drive a bus. She doesn't need that, and you can make her get her CDL, but you don't get out of the way.
My wife got hers, because she couldn't find anybody to drive her field trip, so she's in the...
leave that kind of optional, if, if, if it's and not let it just be something that a person had to have. I know a lot of people who would who would turn the job down because of the CDL.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, is that currently part of the requirement, Mr. Moore? Anything about the CDL being a job requirement? Is that part of?
I don't think it's a part of the job requirement, but typically, we have people work at the bus garage. They have to get their CDL. You wouldn't have to, I presume, but I would think that Randy would want that person to have their CDL. Much as we like for our principals to have their CDLs because of emergency situations that come up in the school. It's just an emergency. I'm not saying that, that's not the primary quality that we're looking for.
I'd, I'd hate to think we have somebody within the system who are like that, that's high quality, that they would take themselves out of this because they prefer not to have the CDL license, because they didn't want to take all the responsibility. It would be nice if all our coaches had CDL licenses, but some of them, my wife went up, you don't want to drive a bus. You can make her get her CDL, but you don't get out of the way.
My wife got hers because she couldn't find anybody to drive her field trip.
That's a big responsibility when you start into that. I'd hate, hate to think we had qualified persons definitely back out of that because they had to have a CDL. I'd hate to think about that.
Let me get to each one of you, the actual descriptions and stuff. I apologize for not having it right here tonight. We'll front out to look at it. I know that's like a lot of things, it's desirable, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't just. If somebody said, if you've got two equally qualified people and one said yes, that'd be fine, and another said no, then you may have to make a decision about that. Obviously, there are big, it's a very important job. It means a lot of reimbursement for us, because if you mess up or request reimbursement on parts and stuff, you go pay for it at a local.
So, I, I hear you saying the call section is focused, not supposed to be CDL.
I don't know. Karen, you might, if, if the person's in the position now, do you recall them ever having to, to go get a bus or drive a bus? That, that has happened before. Not so much driving one, but maybe driving somebody out there to get one. So, you wouldn't, I agree, it's important, but it may not stand in the way of somebody getting the job. We just have to do something. I'll send you that, the information that we have. Do we have any applications, Mr. Moore, at this point?
I received one today, but I, you know, we come in periodically. It hasn't been posted very long.
Our desire is to really have, I mean, we need to have somebody in that before October fifteenth, so that they can make some plans to go to the one-year training. Because unless they're properly trained, they're just in the dark down there. If one is retiring, leaves, which he's going to leave first of the year, we don't want to put somebody without, without at least a month overlap to try to get the training that's necessary, because it could cost you significant amounts of money if it's not.
Mr. Chairman, October, November fifteenth, what is the date?
The training is around the first week of November, so we.
What's the actual date of the training?
It's that first week of November.
It's two or three days in.
We can just get the description. I'll help me go along the way for it.
Policy? Prue Wadham, he's right now with PTO fundraisers. You hiding on me that day?
Hmm?
I think you're hiding on me.
Oh, yeah. As you can see, it's just the same, it's kind of like we had last year. And if you have any questions about any of our, our.
Have a motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Yes.
I think high schools are ready to request talk about. This first request from Coach Harbinger, he's requested to sell some stainless steel tumblers, raffle off a night at a cap, at a cabin in Sevierville, Tennessee, and sell T-shirts. The purpose of this is to raise money for new uniforms and also to purchase a new gun, shootaway machine. Yeah, that's that. The second one is the rice club. They're asking to sell tea and cookies at the Megan County Fair. Purpose is to buy a pizza for their meetings and also purchase additional rice T-shirts.
Afternoon, what is rice?
Uh, it's.
What purposes? Respect, integrity?
Service.
Service, eat.
That doesn't matter, I just.
And then the last one is the fruit sales that the band normally does. Same, the same funders they've done in the past.
Well, any questions?
Make a motion to approve fundraiser for crack on high school?
Have a motion, second. I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Yes. Howling school fundraiser?
Yeah. The class of 2015 has a donkey basketball game at the Center, a pack of case and breakfast on December one at the Methodist Church. And then also Christmas meat sales from mid-November to early December. Volleyball team wants approval for a volleyball tournament fundraiser on Saturday, September twenty-second.
We also have, and with overnight trips, Ms. Marfie, if it's copy, to put those fundraisers all on that.
Yeah, those are on the consent agenda.
Questions?
I think one of the requirements is that our principal has to participate in the donkey basketball game.
I'm one of those like donkeys. They're gonna ride me.
Make a question, accept.
Have a motion, second. I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Yes. Hollow Valley, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, our PTO has got several fundraisers there, starting with a mixed bag design, sort of a handbag sale. We'd like to start that actually in the next week or so with your approval. And then on October the ninth, an open house, we, we really want to seek out an opportunity to get that community into that new school and just let them walk through it and, and see what it looks like. And while they're there, maybe get in their pocketbook a little bit and sell some hot dogs. And then looking down the road, a Santa shop that they've done for the last several years, in the spring, a Tupperware sale. And then perhaps a five K run on the Greenway later in the spring.
Make a question to accept fundraiser?
Second.
Motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye. All opposed, no? Middle school. I think early college.
Yes, we, PTSO, with the agreement at MEC, have adopted Siler Road for, get our name out there, people see, it's going to be Holiday Trail Road. Part of the agreement with the DOT is that your adopted highway must be litter pickup every quarter. We want to do ours on Sunday. I think the date's up there, the sixteenth, with the rain out date the twenty-third. Sunday was picked because that's the lowest traffic volume day, seeing as the library's closed, of course, MEC's not there and SEC's not there. I've been out to school on a few Sundays and there's very little traffic on that road. Be supervised by parents, PTSO members and staff. We divide the kids up into teams and then take a section of the road, and that's our plan.
And they will do this every year, when they get to the bridge and all that, they'll do, this will be a section they will do.
Yeah, it's got to be quarterly. We're going to have all the way down to the bridge once the new road opens.
Are you going to do that before church or after church on Sunday?
It'll be after church for sure. And DOT provide vests and signage and bags. We'll provide picker uppers and gloves and that kind of stuff.
I, I did get this from Mr. Gibbs. I certainly support it. We did check with an insurance carrier and basically the carrier said we needed to bring it before the board to, basically that it's a board-approved activity, therefore, certainly don't think anything is going to happen and all the care will be there, but, you know, Mr. Gibbs needs to have that, that backing from us, that, and, and the insurance people said, no, no problem with it at all, as long as it was conducted, you know, supervised and that type of thing, and we did need a board approval specifically for it.
John, you, as far as you know, then that would be already made, you know, it would be the, it's a great idea, but will we open ourselves up any further ability or anything like that?
I mean, if you didn't approve it and, well, I mean, I guess if you didn't approve it, there wouldn't be an event. But if it had not come before the board and, and, you know, there, there were some students that say organize themselves and went out there and there was a problem, the board's going to get sued. I mean, there's just no, no doubt about it. So, you're actually, you're better off and you're more protected to have considered it, acknowledged it, approved it, and, and it'll be a school activity.
I guess that's what I'm asking for your opinion.
So, we're better, we're much better off to have the board approve it.
I guess what I'm asking, with approval, are we open ourselves up?
No.
Or anything like that?
You'd be sued either way.
There's also consent form that the DOT requires us to have signed by parents. And I'm sure that can be challenged in court if something happened, God forbid, but there is a form where parents will be, and it releases the DOT and whatever organization is doing it from liability, God forbid something happens.
Of course, that's due to.
De-retted, and they'll sue.
Right, absolutely.
Have a motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye. All opposed, no?
Thank you.
Making middle school fundraiser.
In conjunction with food services, we want to sell donuts, lunch. Cheerleaders want, every, every year they sell donuts, they order them, pre-order them, then when they come, they disperse them. They won't be served at lunch, so I think we're okay in that.
Can't serve anything until after the last lunch is served?
Exactly. So, these will be sold and delivered after school, so we should be fine on that.
Make a motion to accept.
Have a motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye. All opposed, no? Okay.
Next thing is every year, middle school across country, they do a spaghetti dinner at Gondola's. They sell them for twenty dollars. Gondola's gives them half that back, so it's a really good thing. They, they sell real well. It's a pretty good deal. So, when they come, you all need to buy them. It really is a good deal.
Make a motion to accept.
Have a motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye. All opposed, no? I'll hear the South Lake fundraiser first. South Lake fundraiser, both.
It's our annual PTO fundraiser with Jack's Co. Has the holiday items and whatnot. We do one fundraiser a year, and this is it with, with the Jack's Co. company. And maybe six or eight years.
I'll say. Have a motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No, no.
Say something?
I was just saying that if it's the board and myself were to partake in every event that is included food tonight, we would be seriously in trouble about, about all kinds of things related to weight. I'm sure you'll go and participate as you can, and those who can't go and don't want to, support them from a financial standpoint and, obviously, it's a way that there are lots of fundraisers, I know that, and I wish you could just say, no, you're not going to do it, but then again, you've got a lot of needs out there that are not met through the taxpayers that come to us. We have co-products with that. So, thank the principals for presenting that.
CACFP application.
It's just our annual renewal time with Child Nutrition, who provides after-school snacks for the CACP program. Everything's basically the same as it was last year, other than we have an increase of five cents to our costs for snack. And then it's our annual renewal for the CACP program also that reimburses us for the juice and milk that we serve.
Mr. Brule, approve, proceed.
Have a motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Speech, language contract.
Yes, I have one contract with Brenda Pangill. She's a retired speech therapist, and she's actually helping out at Olive Valley. One of our speech therapists has had some medical problems, and so she's only able to work part-time. Brenda's kind of filling in the gap there. Let me just do a mic. The second one is with Mary Hefferson. She is a retired speech pathologist in Highlands, and she's going to be working with a homebound student in the Highlands community for a limited number of hours a week. And then the third one is with Pro Care, which is a company that does placements of different kinds of therapists. We had one of our speech therapists desert us and go to Jackson County right before school started, and we've been looking and have not had any applicants. So, I've been talking with Pro Care, and they have a speech therapist who is in the Asheville area that will contract, work through this contract for the school year.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion in the second. I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Yes. Are we doing this next one, Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we take on this, as we are in discussion with our local teachers association as to the best way to put this policy together. We've had some pretty good meetings, and I think we're progressing well. So, we may have it ready for first reading next month. I'm not sure. We'll see.
Motion table, if it's good just to proceed, but.
There wouldn't be any harm with the board, as long as the minutes reflect that no, no action was taken at this time, just to, to let go with that.
You don't need to take that stuff. Leave it there, Tim. Let's make it. I like it that way. It's unique. As you can see, we have three areas of primary concern. Although those numbers that are in blue are definitely higher than we want them to be. They do not exceed the state averages or the, excuse me, the state maximum class sizes. However, the ones that do, and this is at the ten-day count. And Dr. Duncan basically has a superintendent's recommendation in part B, but I'll answer any questions about part A that anyone may have. Regardless of what they are. Can't mess up a good story with facts, Mr. Brule.
Have we, I don't know if it was mandated or suggested, or had was last time. We're not doing any more transfers on the district principals with the last, or meeting or something like that.
Well, I think our principals are doing a pretty good job of making sure that anyone that comes in has to live in their actual district.
Right, and that's kind of, that's the way we left at the last time, so it stopped.
And we do have some that are out of district, obviously, that were there previously, but.
Right, but they're not coming in on twelve, thirteen?
No, sir. I mean, as far as I know, Ms. Parks, Mr. Brown would have to speak to that.
We've got one employee who.
That's a given, I think. And what teachers' children, I mean, we're not going to ask them to go to a different district to create hardship.
These numbers do change a little bit. I think.
Every day.
Tenth day, I don't have that specifically in front of you, but on the tenth day, we had, I think, forty-four, thirty-one. And today, we've got four, 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 zero. So, basically, we've added nine students since.
And also be aware that September first is right around the corner, and there are a lot of people out there from different states that don't even realize that school is in session. I would say we'll go up a little bit more.
We believe in y'all.
Yes.
So, we have.
After Labor Day.
Then a recommendation. Any questions?
The numbers, the numbers speak for themselves.
Have a motion in the second to accept the recommendation. Any further discussion? I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
Mr. Moore, what do you anticipate, having these teachers in place for the school?
I'm sorry?
When do you anticipate having these teachers in place for the school?
I could have them tomorrow, if you feel like that's the direction we need to go.
We just approved it, so I think so.
Sir?
We just approved it, so.
I have people, I'm not sure we've got, I think. of preparing for this, and if you give us the thumbs up, we have interviewed elementary candidates, we have interviewed teacher assistants, I think we could name people and move forward.
So the next week or two, you will have everybody in place?
I hope.
You will need to poll for that still, correct?
Yes, sir.
We like to have a poll for approval.
I would imagine we could have that ready by tomorrow afternoon for your approval.
So your principals have already taken a look a little bit?
I'm sorry?
So your principals have already been involved with that, so was it already?
They make those choices, I don't...
Since we have a pool that we didn't exhaust, we could go back to that.
This problem.
I think this comes as a surprise to all of you.
No.
That's been chronic, these things that I can...
If I could, Mr. Judge, one of the respects back on what Mr. Shields was referring to, we did talk last time, we had a discussion about starting now, I think it is, with our kindergarten, and possibly first graders as they come in, trying to educate parents, I think it was, that we will not be allowing out-of-district transfers. Now, Mr. Henning may have to give us some saying, I think we need to make sure that is conveyed, and I don't know if we need to take action to that effect, or what, what course of action, or what path we need to take now. John? I guess I'm willing to finally do that, because these numbers show me that it's, that we don't have much choice.
Yeah, I mean, the policy's in place, and I think, I think it's, it gets, it's easy to kind of drift away from that, especially in such a, you know, a community like this, where everybody knows everybody, and wants to say, yeah, I know you, we'll help you out, and it just doesn't, you can drift away from it, but I think just to have them maybe distribute the policy to parents, again, and maybe with a cover letter that explains, no, really.
We mean it this time.
We mean it this time, yeah.
Okay.
Are we gonna have an issue on those that we have allowed, we started forcing, I guess I need to further, I need to narrow my question down some.
I don't, nobody has any particular right to, you know, to, to an assignment one way or another, so, I don't believe so.
We're not, as long as those that have been, we don't take those children, just lodge them in, until we're fine to do that.
Yes, I think, yeah, the district's within its rights to, to assign that on that basis.
If the board is supporting this, I think we need to, I think we have the policy, I think we need to give our lessons back to Duncan to pursue and move forward on that very thing.
Let me try to bring you something back in the September meeting, that will maybe clarify a policy that is pretty clear, but just to define it a little bit more, and there's things we probably need to think about in relationship to that, but basically, we have lines drawn, if those, those lines sometimes need to be changed in terms of, you know, if you have forty kids move in in a place where you don't have any space for them, then you have to be able to, to have some flexibility in that type of thing, but only on a temporary basis. But let me get something, we have a question for September. So we don't pay?
No, I said, I just want to make sure that we're trying to give...
Building new grounds.
I just, I just listed the major projects that we're involved in right now, the Highlands Roofing Project, which is an ongoing project, they're supposed to start this week, that was the last week of the month that they gave us some information to, that they could start then, Highlands Baller Replacements, really not a replacement, it's a replacement of some broken parks and things like that, but it, it is ongoing by our own maintenance staff, and they should have that completed, obviously trying to get all of that done prior to any real weather change that might occur. Union Academy, we went ahead and put the walls in between one of the large rooms there, and then also balled off the area that is, that was the kitchen, and there is a classroom there, so they have a much paperable environment, advise you to go over there and look at that, and if you have a chance to go by and visit that, to see, our maintenance folks did a really good job on that, so those are, just gave just some, some projects that are ongoing, and we're, and we've got some others that are out there, I believe we need to support very soon to set up a dissociative review committee there, and while we're at this point, Mr. Henning and I have talked several different times, and the accused have bond money that comes from the state to help us renovate a lot of the school building up at Highlands, is moving closer. Go ahead, sir.
Anyhow, I don't know, I think, I've been working with Dr. Duncan, Chester Jones, for, you know, coordinating everything, he needed to be able to send the, the final sort of confirmation letter to, to the state, and I think ideally, it'll be this week, and we'll know something soon.
So you think the letter's gonna be sent to Raleigh this week?
I would hope so, we'll, I don't really have a control over that. I could promise you, and then it not happen, I don't want to do that.
We're closer than we've ever been, and we're gonna cross over, and the people in Raleigh are anxious for us to get a letter from them, so they can, they can move on, but I think the eyes of Doc and the T's have been crossed, and the little Percy J, you know, the little J, Doc's got that.
Sometimes the eyes have been crossed, I mean, we've done everything.
Yeah, our eyes were crossed.
Well, thank you for your persistence on that.
Business and finance. Fundraise, using Ms. Cook.
We have three for Franklin House, too, would you like to do a moment one time? Okay, the first two are for long-distance phone calls, and basically, they're just moving, the different departments who make long-distance phone calls, they take it out of their general fund, so she's just placing it back out of the different line items into the general fund, where they pay the long-distance phone bill. The next one is for junior class, they've chosen to leave five hundred dollars in the junior class fund, and then move the remaining balance up to the senior class, 'cause the juniors and seniors work together with the prom and all that, and they just, the junior money's supposed to follow when they become seniors.
Vote, accept.
Next one is Making Middle School.
Let's do these three sets of that.
Okay.
I have a motion.
For Franklin House.
Motion in second. All favor say aye. All vote no. Sorry about that, Angie.
No, that's okay.
Make a move.
The next one is Making Middle School, and it's just a four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar transfer from the Making Middle School Fitness and Health account into the Industrial Arts, and that's where Mr. Greenwood in the vocational department is actually making cornhole boards for the PE classes, so that's a project that they're doing with their class and helping out PE classes.
Mr. Speaker, approve.
I'll vote a, I'll vote in second. All favor say aye. All vote no. Here it is, discussion items.
You have information in front of you that, and you can, may have some other information, excuse, like a little code stuff. You have a little sheet there that basically shows you what the schools get in terms of supply money, those type of things, every year. What I'm recommending at this point is that we actually split that amount into, into two different amounts that we, they already get an amount of about thirty-three dollars and fifty-two cents from the state instructional funds, which they are, they're encouraged to spend the state instructional funds first, and that, and they'll do that. This is really not taking money away, but it is waiting on to see where we are, obviously we know we have to very, very, very carefully watch our financial situations, and, you know, if it's something that they need, obviously they've got the thirty-three dollars a student from the state, and then they've got the twelve dollars of us, so that gives them forty-five dollars per AVM for materials and supplies, and I'm basically asking, and just saying to you that it would be my desire to have that amount of money, but to split it into two pots, reducing for the first time, two dollars on instructional, reducing one dollar on the, on the library, and reducing two dollars on the staff development, to, to help. Other ones I've left in there, because historical information is that those, that those are spent, those are used, and are needed. That doesn't mean that we can't come back with some of these areas and look very, very, very carefully at them, as we approach our, our budget planning process, even early in this fiscal year, or next fiscal year, because we, we don't want to catch ourselves way behind in, in our preparation process there, so, any of these particular accounts, Ms. Cook's worked with it extensively, and I asked her to do this, and she can answer questions about what might be included in those particular line items, if you have a particular question about it.
You have a time for the second one, to kick in? Second page?
January, January, okay. Right.
If they spend their funds, state funds?
Yes, if we're able to.
The principal's still encouraged to spend their state, like state instructional funds first, right?
First, yes.
Now, I see local instruction and state instructional, are those at school level now, or...
No, they do purchase orders, and they're sent through our office.
Okay. And they designate local or instructional, but you, or state?
Yes.
But state is to be spent first?
Yeah.
She can send it back, at this, at this point in the year, we should be spending all of the state funds at this point.
You need our approval to do it this way?
Well, it's an informational kind of thing, I mean, it doesn't hurt to have the approval, but it's a little change from doing business, you know, that you've normally done, and it's, hopefully, won't affect what we're doing out there in the schools, but I just don't see a point in us, in essence, giving away all that we have at this point, and not being able to come back and say, our financial situation looks a little different than it did in September, and so we're good to go with this, or we'd like to hold it a little bit longer, this is not, if you look at it, you know, two dollars per child and stuff like that, that's not gonna make a big difference, you know, in most of...
I think we make a motion.
Recommendation, motion accept, our seventeen presentation.
I have a motion in second. I'll favor say aye. All vote no.
Yes.
Yeah. We're getting information, discussion items.
We have the board meeting schedule, I think you have those, the next meeting will be, I believe, at Highlands, and that, unless that's located at the school, is there a specific time that we need to be there?
We got it cooked for you.
It may be the slow cook.
Okay.
Tom's usually there, how many?
About five o'clock. Regular board meeting will be at six o'clock, Highlands at the school, okay, and then the annual conference, if you're planning on attending that, always is a very helpful time of the conference, I'm sure a lot of my schedule will be at this point, but I encourage you to attend that, the board administrator assistant will also be attending, but that's the twelfth through the fifteenth of November, and you just need to talk to Renee, get, get the information that you need to, if you're, just make that conference.
Can you get your required hours there, your educational hours?
Superintendent, information?
Just a lot of coming events, all sports, activity, we have a master schedule up here for all of them, of course, there are a lot of them at the schools and this type of thing, and activities, they're very extensive, I just listed those, there are all kinds of things coming up that we could participate in, as far as that, the Making County Fair, schools always have, they choose to have different kinds of things at the fair, that's coming up the twelfth through the fifteenth, and I believe that's a, I'm trying to think what day that is now. But, you know, whatever support you can give, and I did see the fair brochure, appreciate the board putting that ad in there, and expressing the things that the fair needs to do. Right now, opening a school, I think is very, very good, my first opportunity to participate in that, I have been able to visit every school in the system, and a lot of the classrooms, I'm trying to do that on a very regular basis. It is, is always a challenge to get to and from schools that are not located right in the center of the community, I'm finding my way to Natahala, I've, I've been two different ways, and I prefer one, other than that, I've been three different ways to Highlands, three different ways to Highlands, and whenever, whenever the dust has settled on the road up there, I hope things will, will go, but I'm enjoying visiting the schools, and visiting with the teachers, being in the classrooms, and it's a good experience, and I encourage you to do that, and, you know, that's all we ask, is I try to do it myself as much as I can, is to, you know, identify yourself, check into the office, and so people, maybe some of our UU teachers that don't necessarily know who you are, will be able to recognize you that way too. We had a good, a good beginning, a good opening of school, I appreciate that, for the staff and the staff and teachers, and support people too.
I have a motion to go in there, vote say.
I've got a question for Tina. Is any other principals or students having trouble? You've called yours. For about twenty copies, it took forty-five minutes, yeah.
When those machines were delivered, the default was that they'd call her and a lot of things, so it has to scan, and it takes a long time, Xerox is going back through and setting that the clock's not supposed to be setting, so, yeah, there's, there's been a, it's given me heartburn. Xerox should have had those copiers installed, and everyone trained by the seven, but it's now the twenty-seventh, and it's still like that. All the copy are not here yet, so that's, that's ongoing.
Those old copy are still in use?
Those old copy are, most of them, except for the one that haven't arrived yet.
My volunteer hours have gotten longer.
So those small copiers would speed up, the larger copiers like in Natahala are not here yet, and some of the elementary schools are not, are not here, but as soon as they get there.
It has to be a source of contention or struggle, and, you know, just, it is this...
John, would you read why we need to vote say?
Yes, sir, is it only for personnel, I said? Okay, that's the reason in one forty-three dash thirteen point one one eight six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee, or prospective public officer employee.
I have a motion to go in there, vote say.
Some of them.
I have a motion in second.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All favor say aye. All vote no. We'll be back out.